Okay, good evening. Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting. No, oh. I'm not doing that. Okay, we have seven board members present, none absent. Hello? I'm not using that.
Just say we stand for the pledge allegiance.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. The Board has been in closed session since 6 o'clock for three items. One is the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body; the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired; and last, the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the best part of our board meetings. We have one recognition tonight. State competitive dance team received first place at state, so please come. Come. This is Coach Ortiz. Where's Coach Ortiz? This is Coach Ortiz's second year with the program, my third year with the program. And can every girl kind of like look over at me right now? I have Ms. Kat, Amanda, Bella, Nina, Nora, Maya, Lauren, Ally, Haley, Emily, Anne-Marie, Michi, Emma, Kate, Eloise and Sophie. Sorry, you're so tall. So if we can give them a big round of applause. This dance team is the longest IHSA season out of any sport, so they, this team in particular has been with me, goodness, eight months because they came out for the competitive season after their fall season. And this year, every single girl on the fall season also made winter competitive, so they have been training together for about eight months. So I just wanted to thank them and all of their parents for their support throughout the entire long season. Thank you so much.
Don't go far because unless I can get away with just first names, you gotta help.
Oh, goodness. Yep, so that's her. I will help you.
Girls, congratulations. What a great honor, what a great memory you're gonna have for the rest of your lives. And that's a long season, but it really seems like, looking at the chemistry between all of you, that you have a ton of fun while you're doing it. So I have a proclamation to read, and then a little folder for each one of you. And then I'm gonna ask you to double back and shake everybody's hand because we want to say congratulations personally. So, whereas the Illinois High School Association, the IHSA, a nonprofit voluntary organization composed of Illinois high schools, each represented by its designated representative, governs the equitable participation in interscholastic athletics and activities that enrich students' educational experience. And whereas educators across the USA believe the participation in interscholastic activities offers students significant lifetime learning experiences that cannot be duplicated in any other instructional setting. And whereas the IHSA sanctioned competitive dance as a sport six years ago, and the York Community High School's competitive dance team has qualified to participate at the state level for all six of those years. Congratulations, coaches. And whereas this team, I'm sorry, whereas this year, the team competed at five invitationals, taking two fourth-place and three first-place finishes, and again qualified through the sectional meet where they took third place to advance to the state tournament. And whereas, as the IHSA Competitive Dance State Series held on January 26, 2018 at the Grossinger Motors Arena in Bloomington, Indiana, is that? That should be Illinois. We'll get a little whiteout for this. The team went head-to-head against the top 30 teams in the state in front of a panel of judges, scoring a 94 out of 100 points on Friday, and continuing to score 96 points on the following day to win the state championship in the Class 3A Division. And whereas, head coach Kirsten Barron stated, "There was a true labor of love and the whole team effort. The athleticism that each and every girl had to reach was at a high level of rigor thanks to the amazing choreography of Lauren Caputo and the endless hours of practice. It all paid off." And whereas this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to York Community High School, Elmhurst District 205, and the families of these students and our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education and administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express deep appreciation and congratulations to head coach Kirsten Barron, assistant coach Alyssa Ortiz, as well as team members, and coaches, you gotta help me here. Emma Burtle, Anne-Marie Carfannini, Katherine Cianella, Bella Dmedco. I slaughtered that too. Delmedico. Amanda Gorski. Oh, I got one right. Amanda Gorski. Nora Harstad, Emily Hyzer, Rio Iori, Katherine Larson, Mia Maya. I can't even get first names right. Maya Lawless, Alexandra Leonard, Nina Nikasia, Eloise Ordioso, Haley Pleva, Sofia Sanfilippo, Lauren Simpson, Amelia Zaccardi, and Michaela Zomaya. You guys make it really hard.
They do, yes.
For their outstanding performance during the 2017-2018 season. Congratulations. What a terrific job. Now I have one of these for each of you.
Thank you.
Did such a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
And I have one for a wall somewhere.
Perfect. We have a wall somewhere.
Excellent.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we really want you to also to come around.
Okay, absolutely.
So we can say thank you for everything you do. You can start over there and work this way. Now I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Keep swinging around. Keep swinging around.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
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 Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
The kids are gonna put the stuff.
Okay.
Just wait a minute? Yeah. Are they gonna mill around? Okay, are there any public comments tonight? Next generation science standards and define STEM pilot, Dave Beatty and Mark Cohen. Thanks.
So first, I want to thank our teachers and students who came out tonight to help share what's going on with STEM in the district. Some of our students here, we have a kindergarten student who's well past his bedtime, so we're gonna try to, we're gonna try to move this in the direction, I want to try to do a little bit of overview, try to make it pretty short, and then get our teachers and students to share what they came to share, and then I'll come back, and if there's any questions for them, we can get those, and then I'm gonna have them go so that they can get home to bed and do whatever they need to do for, to prepare for tomorrow, okay, if that's all right with everybody. So, in District 205, we have this thing called STEM. I'm the director of STEM. STEM is a word that gets thrown around quite a bit. It means different things to different people. So the first thing we want to do is really think about what that word STEM means for us here in District 205, and I really like this definition of STEM, and that is, it's a definition actually I took from the dean of engineering at University of Illinois. When he described STEM, this is what he described STEM as, and that's applying technical knowledge and skill to solve real problems. And so that involves all sorts of knowledge and skills. It involves writing, and math, and engineering, and everything. STEM typically stands for science, technology, engineering, and math, but it involves so much more. And so I really want us to think about STEM from that perspective of being this like real-world problem-solving activity that really incorporates all of these different areas. And some people want to call it STEAM, and that includes the arts, and I definitely think the arts are included, and I think you'll see some evidence of that in some of the projects that the students have been working on. So I don't want to exclude anything because the acronym only includes science, technology, engineering, and math. I think it includes a lot more than that. So when we think about STEM, we want to think about this idea of real-world problem-solving and applying technical skills and knowledge to that problem-solving. These are some of the projects that we're currently sort of in the midst of. We have math curriculum that's changing, and so having a strong foundation in math is key to doing real-world problem-solving, so that's a part of what we're doing for STEM. We have math interventions at the middle school level that we're, that we're starting this year and are really pushing and trying to make sure that those are very effective. We have some university courses for teachers that we've had about 125 teachers go through those specific to math. Next-gen science standards, we've been developing curriculum over the course of this year and for 612, and we'll be adding K5 starting in the summer so that we have a full K12 science curriculum alongside this idea of STEM and problem-solving. We have library maker spaces in the elementary schools which are really getting off the ground this year. We actually have some connections to that in some of the projects that we've got coming up here in a second, so that you can see some of the things we're doing in our libraries around STEM. And then the defined STEM pilot, which is the thing you're gonna see some pieces of that our teachers and students came to share today. And again, I can come back to this and talk more in depth about these things when we come back to this at the end, after we've had everyone come up and talk and any questions for them. I just wanted to share a couple images of some of the things that we're doing in our math curriculum, because I think sometimes when we do curricular changes, I really want us to see like, why is it that we're doing these changes? What is different about the new math curriculum that we're using? What's different about these resources and what we expect from students? And I know it's difficult to see on the images on the screen, but in this particular photo, we've got fifth-grade students from Jefferson who are using tape diagrams to solve real-world problems. And I think this is the kind of activity that we didn't see in spades before, but we're seeing a lot more of students using models to solve problems, using visual models, and that's a big part of what we're doing in Eureka K8. We're really introducing this idea of visual models. How do we create visual models? What do they look like? What are the patterns involved? And how do we apply those to the kinds of real-world problems that we're interested in our students solving? This is a picture, again, I know it's a little bit hard to make out, there's a lot of numbers on this student's whiteboard, but what they're doing is they're Lincoln students, and they're really looking at this idea of composite and prime numbers, which when you think about prime numbers, if you're not a math person, you're like, prime numbers, yeah, I remember kind of what that means. But they play a big role in a lot of things that are going on nowadays. When you think about codes, when you think about encryption, prime numbers are a key component of those things. And our students need to understand the difference between composite and prime numbers, how to make composite numbers, how to identify prime numbers. Not only that, but we're looking at how we can generate factors, which is a key component and part of what we do in our high schools. How do we factor numbers? How does that factor into, I'm gonna use the word factor a lot, factor into things like factoring polynomials, other sorts of activities that our students are doing in later math courses. They have to be able to build those skills early on. And so we're using these kinds of activities where students are writing on their whiteboards, they're sharing that with the rest of their class, they're sharing that with their peers, they're having in-depth conversations and discussions, and those are the kind of things that we're encouraging more and more with our new curricular materials. This is in, if you look up in the upper left, there's a diagram that has 13, 7, and has the 13 divided up into 10 and 3, and it's got equal 6. And this student is doing subtraction, but they're using this make-10 strategy, and which is based on number bonds that we learned early on in kindergarten and first grade. This is a second-grade student at Fisher. And this idea of number bonds is so important to building the early literacy in math. We, and when it, when it's up on the board like this, it looks real messy. It doesn't look nice and neat like the standard algorithm would. We put our 13 in our 6, and we borrow from the ones column, we put it over here, and we make our 13, and we subtract, or we make our numbers over here and we subtract. But what it does is it sets up students to do mental math, then with larger numbers later. So a lot of the strategies we're using, the visual strategy, if you can see next to the student, there's actually some dots, there's some open dots and some closed dots. And again, that's part of the visual strategies that he's using. We're creating models the students are using in their heads to do mental math, which is an incredibly important skill for our students to do later. That does not come from using the standard algorithm over and over and over again. So we need to build those mental, those mental math strategies, and that's what's happening here in this picture. Third grade, we're using the same idea of number bonds, only now we're looking at multiplication. So we're using the same idea, splitting numbers into pieces, we're using it in a multiplication context. All of these things, all these models we're building for students, we're really having students build for themselves, are going to lead into these kinds of problem-solving activities that we want them to be able to do more independently, and that's the kind of stuff we're gonna see here in a second. This, now we're moving up into eighth grade, and this is actually algebra. So this is outside of Eureka. We have new materials in our algebra courses this year, eighth grade and ninth grade, so our eighth-grade middle school courses, algebra courses, and our ninth-grade algebra A/B courses using the same materials that they chose together. And that is gonna spread into our seventh-grade algebra courses next year so that all of our algebra courses are using the same materials. What they're doing in this picture, I know you can't see, you just see students sitting at desks, but they're actually using this thing called an addition table to look for patterns. It's one of the first things they do in their algebra course, and then they start codifying those patterns into algebraic notation. So it's both looking at basic skills that we need them to refresh and think about, but it also connects directly with the kinds of ideas that they're doing in algebra. This is, this is part of our library maker spaces, so we're looking at some students who are actually at Hawthorne, and they're third graders, they're using magnet tiles to complete challenges. Caroline Weaver, the librarian at Hawthorne, actually created specific challenges for students to do with the materials that we've been purchasing through the themes grants. But she also opened it up so that students could create their own challenges. So if a student's like, I don't want to do that, I'm gonna make up my own challenge to complete in the course of using whatever the materials are. They were able to do that, and we found a lot of really cool applications the kids were able to, I don't know if any of you have magnet tiles at home, or if you've heard of these things before, they're fantastic. Kids will play with them for hours and hours and hours. We've got them in the libraries, and we really want both to have students completing challenges to try to use constraints and design solutions in those constraints, an engineering thing that we want students to be doing, but also creating their own, like, okay, now you've figured this out a couple times, now what's something else? Create your own challenge. Give your challenge to somebody else. Give your challenge to the fourth-grade class that's coming in. Let's see if they can complete your challenge. Here we've got some kids practicing coding, also third graders at Hawthorne, and they're using the Code and Go robots, which are another piece of, another set of materials that we got through the themes grants this year. And lastly, last thing I'm gonna say before I turn it over, we've got sixth graders at Sandberg here, and they're actually designing on their Chromebooks tailor-made aquariums. So this is actually part of defined STEM, so they did a defined STEM project in one of our science classes in, actually a couple of our science classes at Sandberg. And they had to do all sorts of research, they looked at what do, like, real aquarium designers, I don't know if you've seen the TV shows and some of the home networks, they'll have like aquarium, I don't know what the name of the shows are, but they're like real aquarium designers, they go into a space and they design a, you know, a crazy-shaped aquarium out of different kinds of materials, they have to do all the physics behind it, the guys talk about, and the girls talk about, like, here's the physics, here's the math, this is how we're doing this. They actually watch some of those videos to get excited about it, and then they have to do all of that work themselves. Who's your audience? What do you need them to do? What's the role you're playing? What is the aquarium, what design constraints does the aquarium need to fulfill? What goes in the aquarium? How do those fish, the species interact? They have to make those decisions all themselves, and it's part of their presentation when they're finished at the end. So that's defined STEM, part of it, and what I'm gonna do now is have, I'm gonna have Ally Germanos come up first. She's getting to introduce her student, and she's gonna talk a little bit about how we're using defined STEM at Jackson, and we've got, oh, good, we're over there, so can we see her? Everybody good? Can you guys see her? Need to move? All right, good.
Hi, I'm Ally Germanos, and I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Jackson.
And I'm Sadie Reynolds.
First of all, I just kind of wanted to start it, start by saying I was super excited to start defined STEM in my classroom. I know I was looking at the curriculum, and a lot of things were surface-level, so when we were talking about earthquakes, there'd be like two days on what it is, how it happens, and then all of a sudden, we're on like rocks, and I'm like, we don't really know much about earthquakes. So we got to dive into a topic that the students were super excited about, and again, do something really cool with it. So we used defined STEM to look further into earthquakes and their safety. My immediate observations after using defined STEM was, one, it was so engaging. Instead of this paper, all the kids are like, can we please start defined STEM today? It was super fun, every second, they wanted to do, keep making their projects. It was super hands-on, they got to use their creative juices, they all got to do what they wanted to do. I didn't tell them they had to do this, or they had to do that. There was real-life situations that were super relevant to their lives. So for our personal class, we worked on, they got to be emergency service director, and they're in charge of keeping a city safe from earthquakes. So they were in groups, and they got to pick any city of their choice that can be out of the country or whatever, and they had to decide, how can I make that city safe? And I think one of the coolest things I found out is each group took that really differently. So one group started by, okay, I'm gonna look at the history of the earthquakes in San Francisco, and I'm gonna see what are the patterns of earthquakes? When do they happen? Why do they happen? Is there a pattern? So they actually created a pop-up timeline that Sadie's holding up, which is, again, something I, kids normally wouldn't make, and I didn't tell anyone to make that. They're like, we need to figure out when the next earthquake's gonna happen in San Francisco. So they used this to predict when that next earthquake would be, which I thought was super cool. While one group was doing that, I had another group, they were like, I want to be an engineer. So they're like, okay, we're gonna figure out what a building has to be made of, how tall can that building be to be safe, how small, how wide? So they built prototypes on what's a good building to have if an earthquake's coming and what will crumble. And a final group was even, they came up to me, and they had an inflation calculator on their computer screen, and they were like, what's inflation? What's inflation? And they got there by themselves. So they were looking up inflation rates to compare costs from past earthquake damage to now, which I thought was super cool. That's not something that's every day people are looking up. Again, the normal curriculum just had us, what's an earthquake? Oh, tectonic plates cause them. And now instead, I have kids looking up inflation rates at nine years old. I thought it was super, super cool. And Sadie's gonna kind of show what she did for her project.
So we researched a little bit about seismic base isolation, and we figured out that it's technically just the method of decapulating a building from its original foundation. So basically, it's saying if you have a metal rod in the inside of a building that connects to a box underground during an earthquake, it would stay together and it wouldn't fall down. But if you take the metal rod out and you don't use seismic base isolation during an earthquake, it would just crumble all the way to the ground.
So again, all these things were things we wouldn't normally learn, and they got to have their creative juices and do what they wanted. They got to present to the class how they think we should be safe in a city of their choice. I actually, today, we finished the entire project, and I asked all the kids today, I go, what did you like about what we did differently with this defined STEM, and what would you want to change? Would you want to change anything? And these are direct quotes from my fourth-grade students. They were all positive. They said, I loved having choice. I love that I got to use an earthquake tracker, so I put them on this earthquake tracker website. It was super cool. They got to look up their specific city, and it told how many earthquakes happened today, in the past seven hours, in the past 24 hours, in the past month. So they were really knowledgeable on their specific topic. They loved being engineers for once in school, making buildings. They loved using materials besides computer and paper. They reiterated that like 40 times. And they loved learning while having so much fun. And those are all things I would say too, and I want to definitely continue this in all different subjects in my classroom.
All right, now I'm gonna have Katie Brick from Fisher come up and introduce her student.
Do you have Jackson?
Oh, do I have Jackson there?
Was that still there?
This is you.
Great, thank you.
Come on up.
They were all positive. They said, "I loved having choice. I love that I got to use an earthquake tracker." So I put them on this earthquake tracker website. It was super cool. They got to look up their specific city, and it told how many earthquakes happened today, in the past seven hours, in the past 24 hours, in the past month. So they were really knowledgeable on their specific topic. They loved being engineers for once in school, making buildings. They loved using materials besides computer and paper. They reiterated that like 40 times. And they loved learning while having so much fun. And those are all things I would say too. And I want to definitely continue this in all different subjects in my classroom.
All right, now I'm going to have Katie Brick from Fisher come up and introduce her student.
Do you have Jackson?
Oh, do I have Jackson there?
Was that still there?
This is you.
Great, thank you. Hi, my name is Katie Brick, and I teach full-day kindergarten at Conrad Fisher. This is AJ, who we're going to come to in just a little bit. Thank you. Perfect, thank you. It's okay. So like David mentioned, when we think about STEAM and STEM, a lot of times, we just think about science. But one of the things I've really liked about Defined STEM is it's cross-curricular, and it's really easy to work into all content areas. So during first trimester, we had wrapped up a Eureka module on shapes, and we dove into it a little bit deeper with a Defined STEM unit, Shapes in Our Neighborhood. So what we did was we pretended that we were building designers and that we were in charge of coming up with a design for a new building. So you can see, my kindergartners are here outside. We were sketching Churchville, and they had shape templates. And their job was to sketch all the exterior of the building. Then what we did was we brought those inside. The kids decorated them. And then we classified the shapes. We counted the shapes. We looked at what we had the most of on the building. And if you're curious, we have the most squares on the exterior of Churchville. If you want, we're curious about that. So a little bit later into the school year, during Try Two, we have been spending our time in ELA with nonfiction. And using our school-wide resource, one of our focus books for nonfiction has been Honeybees. So Defined STEM has a honeybee unit. So we have been able to bring in honeybees into Defined STEM. So AJ's going to help me a little bit with that for this one. So I'm going to ask you some questions, AJ. You can come right on over here. All right. So AJ, what did we pretend to be when we were doing some research?
Scientists.
And what did we want to learn all about?
Honeybees.
And why are honeybees so important for us?
Without honeybees, we won't have flowers, fruits, or nuts.
You're exactly right. So what did our class decide was going to be the best thing to do so that we could educate and teach everybody about honeybees?
Wait, how, I mean, a nonfiction book about honeybees.
You are exactly right. So what did we do? How did we found out information about honeybees? We did some research. How did we research?
On iPads, videos, and books.
Very good. So we broke our class into four groups, and all of the kindergarten groups wrote a nonfiction book. So this was AJ's book, and you can hold it up, AJ. This was actually, he designed the cover for his book, and his was Honeybee's Help. So he's going to read his chapter from our book.
All right, the body. Legs, and, oh.
Honeybee's eye.
Okay, honeybees are flying insects. They have yellow and black stripes. Female honeybees have stings.
Very good. Good job, AJ. Thank you. So each group in the class researched something different. So AJ researched the body. We had a group research making honey. Another group researched pollinators. And another group researched save the bees. And the kids really got a good handle on why it is that we need honeybees around, because we're going to have a serious food problem if we don't. So AJ, what'd you think? Did you like this project?
Yeah.
Yeah, we liked this one. This was a fun one. And our favorite part was, we got to turn ourselves into bees at the very end, too. So that's one of the things I really like about Defined STEM. We actually are going to be bringing it into a science unit during Try Three, but it's very easy to bring into ELA, to math, really any content area that you're using.
All right, now I'm going to bring Ashley Barra, a third grade teacher at Lincoln, up with her group.
Hello, I'm Ashley Barra, third grade teacher at Lincoln. And this is Colin and Paul in Diesel. And they're here to share some stuff with you today as well. So when Dave Beatty asked me four weeks ago to speak to all of you about the learning that has been happening by using the Defined STEM resource in my classroom, I kind of looked around my room at a mess of cardboard boxes and tape and little Lego spaceship men, and thought, "How am I going to convince anybody that this disaster is learning?" So jump ahead to three weeks, when my kids started their presentations. And I realized that my students had done more reading during their science time than they have ever done in past years. They were reading online resources, informational books, and news articles to gather information for what they needed for their space stations. And then they wrote persuasive pieces in a way that I have never seen before in third graders. They were organized and detailed, and they addressed the concerns that their audience, which was NASA, would have. Some students worked with their math reach teacher to scale their project aside, and while doing so, realized that they could double their living space by turning gravity off and on, and then utilizing the ceiling as living space. This unit was truly interdisciplinary and really created so much engagement within my students that they were constantly asking me to stay inside from recess to work on it. And that was even on the nice days that we had outside, too. And they were forced to work collaboratively with other students and problem-solved the many issues that I threw at them. Many parents contacted me about how the excitement was carrying over at home as well. One parent wrote to me, "C has been raving every day about her space station project that she is creating. She said that she loves learning about space and desperately wants her project to be chosen. I think at this point, she may even want to become an astronaut." And then another parent wrote, "My boy is very excited about the Mars project they have been working on, so much that he spent five hours working on a spaceship, truck, and explorer, all made out of Legos. I have to admit, I'm really impressed by what he did." We had many types of finished pieces that our kids came up with, including using our new 3D printer that's in the library. So you could pass these around if you want to see. They're kind of cool. It was the first time that we had used our 3D printer. And then, "The boys would like to share the space station" that they had created with you as well.
If you ask anyone in my class, "Oh, did you have fun making your model?", they'll most likely say, "Yeah, I had a lot of fun doing it." We used our imaginations to create this project, and we remember more about what we learned to base our models off of. We know a lot more about Mars. Even, we even made our space station for Mars because it's the closest planet to Earth. We were never bored, and we were always excited to work on our project. We even asked to stay inside for recess to work on our project. Our teacher made us go outside sometimes. We're learning how to keep things stable and how to use less duct tape. My teacher says that utilizing our resources. We were reading more to base our model off of our research, and it's fun to write about our project. Please let us do this next year.
Do you want to show your pieces in it? Those are solar panels. Isn't that cool?
And there's an air tank right here. Okay. There was a lunch, there's a lunchroom right here. Wait, is this the lunchroom?
Yes, that's the gym.
This is the gym where other people work out. This is the lunchroom where you eat, drink, and, yeah. And this is the air tank where we get our air. Here's another air tank where we get our air. And this is the bed where astronauts sleep during night when they need to rest.
There was going to be six, but we didn't have enough time to put them all in.
This is the elevator to go to the lunchroom, to the gym. This is another elevator from, from the helicopter to the garage or the food court.
Thank you.
All right, so if there's any questions for any of the teachers or students, this is the time. And then I'm going to have them go so they can go home. And then you can ask me a bunch of questions afterwards if you need to. Or no.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you. So just to put a cap on what you just saw, thinking about how, I mean, Defined STEM is a resource. But I think the idea here is that we're really trying to integrate content areas as much as possible. Defined STEM, just a way for us to do that that makes it a little bit easier, provides a lot of resources for us to do that. But I think the idea is really around this integration, really engaging students in real-world problems. If we're going to go to Mars, what's that going to look like? And having them do everything and go in different directions with those ideas. Different groups create different ways to deal with it, to deal with those different problems. And that's really what we're trying to do, introduce a lot of student choice and those integration ideas. Some other things we're doing, thinking in the future in terms of STEM, really thinking about summer school, how we can make summer school a place where we can, and I'm particularly focused on the transition between elementary and middle school at this point, thinking about how we can really get students making that transition who might have been struggling in fifth grade math, to get them that leg up that they need. And we've got some really good resources for that, too, this year. So I'm hoping to do that in this summer. We're also introducing, like I mentioned before, elementary into our next-gen science curriculum development. We're looking at how to use Defined STEM in our acceleration courses. I know acceleration, the enrichment course has been something we've been really focused on. And so that's another way we can use this new resource in order to create interdisciplinary STEM projects for students to do during that acceleration time that really gives them access to some things that they would not have access to in other ways. What you just saw up here, it connects to those integrated Defined STEM K-5 cornerstone projects, looking for ways we can incorporate projects like this that will connect up the really core content areas that we have in our elementary at every single grade level, at least once a trimester is what we're trying to shoot for. And that's coming, we won't be complete with that next year, but it's coming in the next couple of years, identifying those integrated projects and making sure that those are part of our elementary curriculum. We're looking at working with the Conservation Foundation. That's just starting up. We're looking at, so the embankment that runs on the north side of town with the power lines, the ComEd owns, you know, giant moat area. ComEd's looking for ways to actually restore that to local prairie. And so we've partnered up with the Conservation Foundation, which is connected to ComEd, to use that area as essentially like a living lab so that our students will learn about, what does indigenous prairie look like? What are the species there? How, you know, what does that look like in different parts of Illinois? And then actually restoring parts of that embankment to a local prairie, having the students take ownership of that. So it's something we're looking at starting next year at Fisher, and then hopefully spreading throughout the district as we look for different locations that are close to our elementary schools in order to do that kind of work. There's so much, actually, great stuff at Fisher. There's like a little marsh right next to Fisher, which is another cool place. We can do some similar kinds of work. But there's a lot of opportunities there. Looking at spreading that makerspace idea to the upper grades. We already have some makerspace going on at York, but we want to really spread that into the middle school and develop it more at the upper grades. Really thinking about ways we can get the specialists that we have at York. We have so many specialists at York that have skills, again, back to this idea of technical skill and applying those to real-world problems. Kids coming up with problems and then seeking out, "Who is it in this building that I need to do, to deal with this problem? Maybe I need the industrial, one of the industrial tech teachers. Maybe I need one of the psychology teachers. Maybe I need someone else, some other expert in this building." And pooling those resources, finding ways to connect those people up with our students to really tackle real problems. I see that that is an area where we can really capitalize on in the future. And then, as you're, I think, already aware to some degree, the idea of the business incubator and the manufacturing pathways that we're developing at York as well are things that are in the planning stages that we want to look at over long-term. We're thinking about, you know, the next two years to five years for all of these projects and how we're rolling them out. And that's the end. And so I can go back to what we're doing now. I can come back to this slide, answer any questions that we might have around any of the stuff that we're doing in terms of STEM at this point.
Questions?
Thanks so much, Dave. First off, love having the teachers and the students here. Because that's what really makes it, that's what makes it real. That's what makes it, seeing how they're excited, makes everything else seem simpler. However.
And thank you for pulling all this together.
When I hear all of these things going on, it sounds like a lot. Okay? So, and maybe we can't talk about this right now, but I'm trying to put in place, you know, a couple things. You know, what are we, you know, all the things that we're doing, you know? How far advanced, in the first slide, we had what were current projects.
Yep, yep.
How far, you know, are we on these? What do we have left on them? How have we gotten the stakeholders involved? So, you know, I don't know that I necessarily want that right now in this meeting because there's so much, but just trying to put that piece together so I have a better understanding of what we're doing, the magnitude of what we're doing, and how much capacity we might have to do more.
Right. And so I can, I can speak to individual things, or we can talk. But I agree with you, there's probably a lot going on today to take up a whole lot of, a whole lot of time right now. I can also prepare some things and provide information to the board as you would need in terms of the different projects. I think overall, what I love about being, you know, the STEM guy is to see this, see all of it interconnected in that, like, we're working on the math curriculum here. We're working on the science curriculum here. We're creating library maker spaces. We're working with Defined STEM. But as we're doing all of those things at the same time, they, to some degree, seem separate, but also very connected. So as we're making changes in math, I start hearing comments from teachers like, "Well, what about, like, what's going on with the science? Like, we're doing all these great things in math, but the science is not really catching up. Like, we're really having a hard time with what's going on in science. So we're making changes in science, and those things are interconnecting." For instance, like, she brought the models that we had 3D printed, or that they had, they had 3D printed. I had no part in that. But we saw, we had a librarian who was like, "We want to have a 3D printer." And I was like, "Well, we have some 3D printers across the district. We know a little bit how this works. It seems like there might be some things we can do with 3D printers. We're not really sure yet. Let's try it out. Let's put a 3D printer in elementary school and see what happens." And all of a sudden, like, it shows up today. "Oh, we're doing these integrated projects." And boom, we've got a use for the 3D printer. A pretty interesting use for a 3D printer, going from paper models to actually creating scale CAD drawings that then come out in real world, you know, in plastic, but essentially real models. So it's like, as we're making these smaller changes throughout different parts, all of those changes are really working together in the sense of, like, they, you know, my role is to try to help see those connections and put those pieces together as we're rolling out each of these things. So while I see, it appears as if there's lots of things going on, I really, what I try to communicate and what I want people to think about is like, what's that umbrella of problem solving? And how we're applying technical skills to solve those problems? And then how we're developing science to make sure we're able to do that? How we're developing math to make sure we can do that? How we're creating these makerspaces in the libraries to allow us to build real models of the things that we're thinking about? And all of these pieces, I really see them all connected together in that way. But you're right, like, we need to be thinking about, like, "How am I getting all the people involved?" This stage, a lot of these things are pilots. Not the math curriculum, but a lot of the other things are in early stages. So connecting all those pieces is really important.
I wish I was, I'm going to go back to elementary school.
Me, too.
The 3D printer was really cool. So STEM is, you know, basically something, it's integrated into the culture. It's a methodology. It's a way of bringing things to life for kids. It's probably a close cousin of, like, inquiry-based learning and whatnot. How far penetrated is it in? And, you know, I know we say "we're doing," but it's unevenly distributed because it ultimately depends on the teacher in front of the classroom. So where are we today? So where are we today, and how fast till we get to the point where kids all have some opportunity to have similar experiences?
Right. So I think at this point, all students have some connection through the library makerspaces, for sure. At the very minimum, all of our students have access to the library makerspace, in effect, I'm 99% sure that all of our students has seen and interacted with the materials in our library makerspaces at this point, whether it be, a lot of times it was through stations, like you saw on the screen, the robot mouse and those other kinds of things. So I think as far as that goes, baseline, all students are interacting with STEM in that way. And when it comes to defined STEM, that is a pilot that's occurring in a handful of places, isolated, but it's also Fisher. So every grade level at Fisher is actually using some form of defined STEM this year in terms of, and connecting that up with their curriculum. So every grade level at Fisher is using it. And then, and the, the point, or the reason why we did that is because Fisher, the whole school piloted math last year, and so this is their second year of implementation of math. So we felt like it was reasonable to expect, and they were excited about it, to expect teachers there to, to jump in on this, on the defined STEM pilot. And so we actually sent grade level leaders, all of them at Fisher, through a full day's training with the defined STEM material, so that they could get that off the ground. But in terms of next steps, we'll be looking at rolling that out district-wide coming into next year, where actually, March 2nd, we have opportunities for teachers to learn about basics and actually pull things in this year if they choose to, but rolling that out more district-wide next year. And so what we're doing is working with defined STEM to connect up projects, the projects you saw, with our math units, so that then, there'll be, you know, if I'm fourth grade teacher and I'm in unit three, that there's a defined STEM project that's linked to that unit in terms of the math content between the two, so then I can utilize those resources to do that. We're also developing schedules, so that it's clear, like, you know, as a, as an elementary teacher, it feels like you're stuck in a schedule sometimes, where you don't have time to do these kinds of things. So we're developing a schedule such that it's clear, like, okay, if I want to do defined STEM, I'm going to take 45 minutes for my math, for my math block on this day, I can take 45 minutes for my English block, because we do a lot of reading and writing in defined STEM as well, so I'm going to take that time on this day. And so it allows them to see, like, okay, this is how it's going to fit in my schedule, so it's not like, here's this thing, figure out how to do it, figure out when it's going to be, you know, and it's not going to be, you have to use this schedule, but it'll be a way for them to incorporate and visualize when that's going to be taking place in the school day. We'll also be providing some training for the folks that want to get started. I don't think next year, it'll be everyone everywhere, but I think two years from now, it'll be everyone every year, everywhere.
Okay, so you feel like you have the resources you need for professional development around this?
Yes, definitely.
And Fisher's the only school where we've made the investment to put it in the entire school?
Correct, right.
But it's in places in the other schools?
Yeah, essentially what happened there is, I have a lot of folks who piloted the math the previous year, spread throughout the district. And so I opened it up to principals, like, okay, folks in your building who are feeling good with the curricular changes at this point, don't feel stressed, like, throw it out there, see if anybody's interested in participating in this, to do some integrated work. And the word got out, coaches started talking to teachers, and all of a sudden, we, I had a line coming in of like, no, we want to do this, this is really exciting. So, and then those people play pivotal roles in the buildings in the next steps, because as you, you know, when they talk to their staff, everyone else is like, oh, yes, I want to do that too, look at what's going on, students moving up to the next grade are like, oh yeah, we did this in third grade, let me help you, teacher, figure out how to, how the, the online resource works, I, we did this before, right? So it spreads in that way, where it's like some key individuals in the building, so that's the way I like to spread these things, it's what we did with math, and it seems to be working, so we're doing that with the defined STEM resource too. Yeah.
So with that last comment, it leads into what I saw was, it really is the right timing for us to make the middle school changes and the middle school changes that we're making, because these elementary school children are going to really expect the same environment to be at the middle school. So that was solidified tonight for me. Secondly, it seems as though we're, we're use, we're organically and naturally utilizing all of the student. And they're seeing how it's not just a science subject, it's not just a math subject, but it's all together. And that is the, just the early thinking of putting those pieces together is fascinating to see it happen. And so, thirdly, with respect to that, not just the student, you know, seeing at a young age how all this stuff works together, and applying it to life, but I like the way that we're doing it, what you highlighted here, and our, our staff is doing, is similar in the environment, which is the library, is just redefining itself. The librarians are, you know, redefining, you know, what their space is. And those are three things that really came out for me, which make it something that we should continue to do. You know, I guess the piece is that, you know, the professional development and the timing for the teachers and, but the interest and the passion actually drives it.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have White and Company here for our master, facility master plan update.
Right, good conversation on the 27th, a productive discussion. I'd also like to thank Dr. Moyer for having us after the state champs and the STEM superstars. It's always good to see, great work on the earthquake, by the way, the earthquake building. So what we're going to, what we're going to do tonight is, kind, I have the agenda slide ready, there you go. Go through a fairly detailed agenda, briefly summarize some of the things we talked about, the process to date. Last session, that was about 15 slides, tonight it's one, so we're going to kind of overview that quickly, talk about some of the things we heard on the 27th, and then provide some additional information in terms of the current state of the facilities, the rationale behind some of the draft concepts, the why question that was asked especially related to Field, Lincoln, and Edison. Talk a little bit about what if you don't do a significant investment at Lincoln specifically. Talk about some of the costs, we have pretty detailed, a lot of data in terms of cost estimates, those are very, very high level numbers, Mark Paskin from ICI is going to kind of describe that process. And then, towards the end, talk about an update on the funding scenarios and then the next steps. So that's the plan tonight. While we're doing that, we have to think long term, so we know that, you know, part of this objective is to be respectful of all the feedback we've had from, you've had from the community over really almost three years. Talk about that feedback and how that, those priorities have shaped the plan. We're going to talk about the opportunity to establish some advisory, a community committee to help shepherd the process, and then the, the idea of establishing a master facilities plan for the district, which is one of the key recommendations from the Focus 205 process. So from a feedback standpoint, this is that one slide that summarized 15 the last time, so you've gone through a series of avenues and channels to get feedback from your community, whether it was the Focus 205 community engagement process, the unique approach of using thought exchanges, a poll for, for people, as a tool for people to collect and share information and thoughts, the phone poll, a couple independent studies, the all-day kindergarten report, which was completed in the fall, and then the educational alignment study that we did back in, presented back in May of 2016, almost two years ago, and that was a study that really looked at, you know, how well the boarding, the buildings are, are supporting the types of programs you're offering, such as STEM, talked about libraries, and how well they're aligned for the future of education. So with that...
So we took all that and we put together a draft operational plan, and this visual, this is a visual representation of the big ideas that are encompassed in that draft plan. We put that into an abstract and discussed it over the summer at a board meeting in July, and we don't have a final plan, because the facilities piece would be integrated into that final plan, but we have, a lot of these ideas are guiding our current approach to our instructional programming, and then the idea would be, we want to bring all of these together into a comprehensive document that includes how facilities would support them. And so the overarching principles that are reflected in some of these concepts all tie to each of those big ideas. And so the idea is student achievement, sustainability, and facilities all coming together, so how does that work? You put, you put all these ideas together and you can get some operational efficiencies, some staffing efficiencies, and then that in turn allows you to invest your resources in the areas that support the professional learning for the types of things we talked about before, for example, at the last presentation. Or we accommodate the ability for all-day kindergarten and, and we're supporting a key performance indicator of all students reading on grade level by third, by the end of third grade. Future-ready learning spaces that support the six Cs and some of the interdisciplinary types of learning that were explained in the last presentation, balancing class sizes, and then the idea of equity across the district. So whether that's safe and secure vestibules at every entrance at every school, or the ability to actually control the heating and cooling in the buildings in every school, which I can tell you isn't always currently the case, et cetera. So those are the types of things that are kind of the, the big ideas, that the other supporting details will, you know, fall into place around these concepts.
Right. So as we, as we begin to look at developing the master facilities plan for the district, three major kind of driver, or three components of that, the aging, aging facilities that are typical of every school district, the important needs of safety and security, and the important needs of students, and what kind of skills and experiences they need to have, learning that's appropriate for the future. So as we looked at this, we, we really tried to summarize the five key components or drivers that are integrated and addressed in the facility master plan. So we know that all buildings have maintenance and capital improvement needs throughout the district, they're different needs, they vary, there are some core components which are consistent across the buildings, Mark is going to kind of highlight some of those. We know that all-day kindergarten is one of the drivers, we know that, we talked last time about how some schools can have capacity to support on all-day kindergarten infusion in their current space, some cannot, how that is impacted into some of the other buildings is, is a key to developing a long-term plan to provide the option of all-day kindergarten at the, at the neighborhood schools. Field and Lincoln are unique in that they are really old compared to the rest of the building stock. We have a little timeline, not built like a model like earlier, but we have a timeline that shows how Field and Lincoln are kind of outlier, outliers across your elementary schools. We know that one of the objectives was to increase operational efficiency by balancing enrollment. You have an opportunity at Edison to create some of that opportunity and some of those changes, we're going to talk about the why of Edison, and when we present that, it's not necessarily a negative like it is in some of the other schools, but it's a positive. You've got some pretty unique and beneficial opportunities that are unique to that building, that site, that can be capitalized upon. And then, and then really the needs of students required, requiring different skills and tools for, for learning in the future. We talked, we heard about media centers, we've heard about STEM already tonight, those are transitioning into modern learning environments in schools across the area. So how we develop spaces to support that type of learning activity in the schools is going to, is another key driver. So those are the five things that are kind of the, the major inputs into that plan, and those are all issues that have been shared and heard from your community engagement process and all that feedback we talked about. So here's the challenge of, of a facility master plan. So, you know, there are independent issues that can be dealt with school by school, and there are a lot of connected issues that, that one, work at one school might impact another. So establishing priorities, it can be pretty complicated, presenting really complex data and, and cost and under different scenarios is, is a challenge. So we're going to try to walk through how those, how those issues are developed, but let me give you a little bit of an example of what independent issues are and connected issues, and I like to use the old row of dominos that really tell, that helped me tell that story. So certain, certain facility issues do not have an impact on other buildings, you can take off an individual project, do it in that building, have an impact there, but it doesn't have a follow-up impact on other schools. Like, for instance, addressing infrastructure or maintenance repairs at a school, improving safety and security at an individual school. Sometimes, you know, you might have access at the front door, or secured entrance at the front door, but once they get into the building, it's not necessarily controlled at an individual school. The whole notion of modernizing a school library into a future-ready media center, you do that at one individual building, you want to try to create equity across some, across the individual schools, but it's a single individual building element, developing a STEM space within a school is also done individually. In contrast to that, there are other issues where if you tackle, tackle a project, you knocked over, knock over some other dominos, and they're, these are all become connected issues. For example, how to provide all-day kindergarten, we can't, we have to think about the overall concept of writing all-day kindergarten in the neighborhood schools, with the realization that every, every school cannot support all, all sections of all-day kindergarten within the current capacity limits of the individual building. Lincoln is a complex solution, we shared with you that, the last time, we have those same drawings, we're probably not going to go into as much detail in terms of the different scenarios, but how you deal with the different options at Lincoln has a ripple effect in terms of where do you put those kids if you choose to remove the existing Lincoln while you, in order to, to clean the site before you replace the building. And then the notion of how do you balance class size is another issue that, is a, is a solution that might impact Edison, but it has an impact in other buildings as well. So for instance, if you're able to balance class size, does that free up space in other buildings to support all-day kindergarten, for instance? Sure, but those are, that's, those are examples of how those issues are very connected. And so that's the complexity of, of developing a, a facility master plan. So we've taken a, a, a approach tonight to try to put the, the four, really four different components of work into buckets. So we know that we have maintenance needs across the district, these are things like the building envelopes, the roofing needs, mechanic, electrical plumbing needs, health life, safety needs, site improvements. We have developed costs for each individual school based on what was really presented as the top priorities for each individual school. We've checked with the staff, had meetings, reviewed the list, met with the principals, so we've got numbers for those top priorities at each individual school. There's also some very specific issues that individual buildings have, for instance, Churchville doesn't have an auditorium, that's been something that's very, become part of our plan, the secure entrance issues, the individual schools that might need air conditioning, the York High School site and athletic fields, that's specific to that building. Madison Early Childhood Center has some, you know, that was an elementary school that's being used as an early childhood building, we've talked about that in the past. Future-ready driven needs, not new to the conversation, but the whole notion of media centers and makerspaces and STEM programs, and the ability to have kids learn in different types of environments for individual breakout and collaboration space is important, the whole notion of technology, infrastructure. And I think one of the challenges that we as adults have with future-ready driven is, it's, it's a hard one to grasp, you know, we often look at it through the lens of our own experience as students, but the, the reality is that our experience is not the students' experience today. So we often ask, why do we need to make that investment in those types of facilities? And we know, all the research that talks about, you know, students going to have different types of jobs, we have to prepare them for jobs that don't exist right now, the whole notion of skills and communication being so critical, and it's not, just not about obtaining, obtaining knowledge. So the student of today is going through a different experience as they go through a school, being prepared for career, college, or life. And so we have to keep that in mind as we try to blend these kind of future writing and learning environments with the other opportunities that, that we're going to outline. So, and then, so those are the three buckets. The fourth one is the whole notion that some of these schools have all these things all mixed up into one, a whole new paint color, so to speak. Lincoln, Field, and Edison, for issues, reasons why, that we will articulate tonight, lend themselves to a more complete, comprehensive type of solution. We have, especially in the case of Lincoln, we have been able to pull those apart to explain to you, you know, if we don't do the new building, what is the impact, what, what types of ripple effect would it have back into the overall budget, what's the cost of doing nothing is part of that conversation. So as we go through the presence, any presentation tonight, Craig and Mark are going to come up, you're going to see these buckets, and you're going to see dollars within each of those buckets, there's a lot of detail not being presented on the screen. There's a lot of detail not being presented on the screen because we wouldn't be able to fit it all on the screen. But just so you know, that the numbers have meaning and analysis behind them. So, I'm going to turn it over to these guys, and they're going to walk through the whole process.
Thanks, Brad. My name is Mark Poskin. I'm with International Contractors, and I wanted to give you an overview on the cost process, on how we assemble cost estimates for your projects. So, before we go on to these next slides, you're going to see a lot of numbers, and you're going to wonder how they're developed. So, I wanted to give you a brief overview on how we do that. Cost estimates are really comprised in two categories. We have hard costs and we have soft costs. And both of those together add up to a total project. And those are the numbers that you're going to see on the slides coming up. So, hard costs make up about 75% to 80% of your total project. They're the bricks and mortar. That's what goes into the building. And then, soft costs make up 20% to 25% of your project. So, soft costs would include things like engineering fees, soil and material testing, asbestos abatement, utility municipality fees, temporary conditions, furniture and equipment, and moving. Hard costs are developed by applying, at this level, very programmatic, very conceptual phase. We take a dollar per square foot against different areas based on the level of renovation. So, light renovation, medium renovation, heavy renovation, all have different levels. And all those costs are based on history. So, we take projects that we've built in the past, and we apply those dollars to your project. For new construction, we use a cost model program. So, cost modeling is developed by taking recent bids from a project that we've built or are building currently. So, for Lincoln, for example, is a new school. We would use a project that we're currently building, Burbank Elementary School, which is a new 83,000 square foot K-5 school for District 111. We have recent bids on that from last summer. We use that to build a model for the new Lincoln, for your project. So, we have things like contingency, general conditions. General conditions are staff to manage your projects. That includes a superintendent, a project manager, a project accountant, and there's a cost for that. We have reimbursable costs, which would be a job site, office trailer, a webcam, copiers, computers, printers to set up a facility to house our staff to manage your work. There's a construction manager fee, which in this case is 2% of the cost of the work. Insurance, 0.75% cost of the work. And then, we have to apply cost escalation. So, your projects may not be happening for two, or three, or four, or five years from now. So, we have to look ahead and escalate the value of labor and material for each of your projects as well. So, I just want to give you an overview on what that means. And then, secondly, maintenance work is a separate category that is in the green bucket that you see on the screen. Examples of maintenance work include tuck pointing, roofing, replacing boilers, replacing pavement, replacing water piping, electrical upgrades, temperature control issues, and isolated finish upgrades at some of your older buildings. So, when you see that green maintenance can, that's what that means. So, with that, I'll have Craig kind of review the projects moving forward.
All right. Good evening, everyone. A lot of numbers there. Want to bring it back just a little bit before we start showing some of the numbers per, the dollars per, recommended per building. But, the next series of slides that we want to show you, and hopefully have you react to, really revolve around some of the items that we weren't able to address when we were together at the workshop. And that was some of the building-specific issues outside of Lincoln, Field, and Edison. Really, if you remember, we had them on the boards in the back over there. And really, it allows us to kind of take a look a little bit more deeply at some of the contemplated improvements or issues that need to be addressed at each one of your buildings. The drawings and the diagrams that we're going to be showing you here, probably in rapid succession, aren't necessarily design drawings, which means that we haven't figured out exactly where all the doors go and all the windows go and so forth, but they're really diagrams to show areas of contemplated improvements for each one of the facilities. In general, they reflect one of the first three categories, whether it's maintenance, building-specific ideas, which really addresses and gets to the idea of equity and getting your facilities all up to the same level as each and every other one. And then, the future-ready driven items, which really speak to some of the things, as Brad had mentioned. The media centers, you saw the STEM presentation, and making facilities accommodative and supportive of the kinds of programs that are already going on in your district that are going to continue to grow and kind of push change across your buildings and all of your infrastructure. So, with that said, just very quickly, we're going to go through the elementary schools very quickly. And you see these first three buckets along the left side over here with the diagrams in the back. And as we go through each one of these schools, it's important to note that maintenance items as well as the future-ready items are pretty consistent between each one of the schools. That kind of goes to the idea of equity across the district, although there might be certain things under the maintenance bucket that are maybe a little bit more specific because different buildings have different needs. It should be noted that it is one of those items that's imperative. It's like taking care of your house. Things break down, right? You have to fix things. Roofs leak. Boilers need to be replaced, need to be cleaned, need to be maintained. Those are all those kinds of items, and we have a fairly good running list of what needs to happen at each one of your facilities. I think it's really outside of this conversation right now. We could be here all night, and I do mean all night, if we want to start talking about all the very specific items that need to be happening from a maintenance, just a general maintenance category to keep your buildings functioning the way they do right now. We have those items. If you do want to add some, ask some specific questions about them, we'll be happy to address them, but otherwise, they'll find their way into sort of the final document that we're putting together, compiling at the tail end of the master planning process. The future-ready items are also very consistent. And as we said before, the media centers, you talk about STEM, maker spaces, and the like, some technology, infrastructure upgrades across the building. So, you'll see those items pretty consistent between each one of the buildings. Now, the prices might vary from each one of the structures because the buildings are different. And so, there's different square footages that we have to address, different unique conditions within the buildings that need to be expressed and taken care of when we're incorporating those items. It really gets to, when we start talking about the building-specific items, that middle category, the red buckets, where you see some bigger fluctuations. For example, over at Emerson over here, looking at the multipurpose room that is in your lower level, and making that more functional for the kids from an instructional standpoint. And one item over here, you do have a nice security vestibule, but the idea of adding some security cameras was also something that we targeted as one of those building-specific items that would help achieve equity between this particular facility and what's going on in some of the rest of your buildings. If we go over to Fisher, again, some of the same things. It has a little bit longer list of maintenance items, but again, you'll notice future-ready is pretty similar. Upgrades to your multipurpose room. Now, instead of just cameras, we're talking here about a security entrance as well as some office renovations to help ease some of that, some of the security issues and main entrance issues that you have at that school. In addition to that, we're also looking at some toilet upgrades for the staff. At Hawthorne, you notice very little to be done, right? You've already put a significant investment into Hawthorne to upgrade that. So, we're just kind of, in this particular instance, talking about some improvements from the future-ready standpoint, your media center, certainly, and some technology issues and infrastructure items that might help to bring that building on par with where the district is going. We look at Jackson. And over here, air conditioning becomes an issue, secure main entrance, main office remodeling at the front of the building. There was an email that I believe, Mr. McDonough, that we had received some questions from you with regards to some site redevelopment improvements because of the flooding issues that are happening there. And that is included in the building-specific number that we have placed here. So, you can see it's a little bit larger number, but certainly something that needs to be addressed at that school as well as at Field. And you'll notice at the next school, Jefferson as well, the number's a little bit higher there, and that's reflective of the fact that we need to take some, take care of some site issues to prevent some flooding problems that are occurring. Air conditioning over at Jefferson, and then, again, some security entrance upgrades along with the main entrance kind of round out that middle category over here. And then, of course, you know, all the dollar figures that go along with it. If we summarize, oh, sorry, last school, then Madison. You notice nothing from a future-ready standpoint, but as Brad had mentioned, that really, the upgrades that we're contemplating over there is really a pretty comprehensive or a more complete renovation, I guess, if you will, to convert that school more to a child-centric environment for the age group that it's supporting right now. This is a building that was built for elementary school kids, much larger kids, and in a different instructional model than is currently being delivered. We talked about activating hallways, creating more scaled and proportioned environments for the kids within, inside the classroom. That's what would be falling under certainly this idea of building-specific items, the $8.2 million number. And then, summarizing all the costs on each one of those different buckets, you could read them for yourself, but really kind of independently, they total up to these numbers. If we go over to the middle schools, if you remember, at one point at the workshop, we were talking about Bryan being a part of sort of the comprehensive improvements, but really more from a staging standpoint for one of the grade levels from Lincoln. But in Bryan's instance, there is a bit of a crowding issue. And adding or relocating the main office to some new construction in the front of the building with a security entry vestibule sequence that could happen frees up some space on the inside of the building, and then adding two additional classrooms, again, kind of helps with the congestion issue that is currently, the school is currently experiencing. It just so happens that these additions and renovations could also help some of the staging issues for the Lincoln students that we're going to be talking about a little bit later And then, looking at Churchville, again, that middle bucket, the sort of an auditorium addition on the south end of the building, and then looking at and reconfiguring the main office with a security entrance, really kind of rounds out the majority of that work contemplated for, the red bucket, I guess, contemplated for Churchville. Perhaps adds a little bit more variety to the kindergarten STEM program as they analyze shapes and so forth, might give an opportunity there to add some variety, but certainly is going to be something that's going to help Churchville get on par with its sister schools, Bryan, and then ultimately over at Sandberg. Now, one of the questions that came up at Sandberg last time we got together, I don't remember who pulled me aside, but there was a lot of concern and angst expressed over the security entry vestibule, and I want to assure everybody that Sandberg also would be experiencing, or is contemplated to provide a secure main entrance with an office remodel as well, on par with what is going on in the other schools around the district. So, that is taken care of, and certainly with all the same kinds of future-ready ideas that we're going to be exploring and contemplating, exploring for all the other schools would happen at this school as well. As we round off the, kind of group all these numbers together between all the buckets, here's how they total up. $8.115 million and then $13.8 million for each one of the maintenance, building-specific, and future-ready driven buckets. And then, lastly, just wanted to spend a little time talking about York, last but certainly not least, looking at the kinds of improvements from a maintenance standpoint, a very large building, so, you know, $3.7 million seems like a lot of money, but when you're talking about the size of building that we're thinking about over here and we're dealing with, you know, tuck pointing, that's going to be an ongoing thing, some pavement, and certainly mechanical upgrades, roofing replacement, patching and replacing, that's all part of daily maintenance that happens. Looking at the building-specific things, the auditorium was one of those spaces that really was left off of the more aggressive improvements and renovations that were done with the high school. So, kind of thinking about what we could do with riggings and lighting and so forth over in that space, maybe even touching the studio theater a little bit. And then, of course, the athletic field upgrades just to the south of the building over there and kind of off the screen is something that is, is looked at and included in that $9.2 million. The future-ready items, the STEM, as well as the business incubator spaces, you heard in the prior presentation that those, about those programs, okay? Right now, for 2018 and 2019 space, some renovated spaces being addressed for those programs, and we just kind of put those on there along with a number to give you an idea of the magnitude of renovation that's going to need to happen to accommodate just those two programs at that particular school. And there's just a very quick list of the auditorium improvements. So, that gets us to the fourth category, that new color that Brad was talking about, the blue color. And there's a few schools that we want to talk about, starting off with Field and Lincoln, sort of being your oldest two schools, and then we're going to round out with Edison and the work scope over there. Actually, let's start off with Edison. And, you know, when you kind of go through analysis and you start looking at the buildings, the tendency is actually to go ahead and think in a negative way. You don't have this, this is wrong, that's bad, we got to get that fixed because it's broken, and all that. With Edison, there's a different mindset that you need to have. There's an opportunity at Edison that you don't have at a lot of your other facilities. And those opportunities are basically because you have, I want to say, the luxury of space. You have the luxury of additional acreage on the site. You have room to kind of move and build and expand. You have the ability to fulfill your district mission and beliefs that Dr. Moyer was talking about, being able, because of square footage as well as, you know, some additional site where to expand and create new space to balance your enrollment. This particular school, when we looked at potential options for renovations and new construction, it was really easy to find new space for all-day kindergarten, right? One of the deficiencies that we found over at the, during the educational alignment study at that school was the main entrance. When we started the process, I did not have the familiarity with the school, and I like to have it that way. So, when I get to a school, I like to see how prominent the main entrance is, how easy it is to find. I had to go around the entire building until I found out where to go. It's hidden. It's on the east, the west side over there. It's kind of hidden from view. Being able to reorient that in terms of, you know, addressing the neighborhood, presenting a new image, welcoming visitors as well as students and staff is something that, again, is one of those things that we're addressing in the proposal that we have over here, I think, in a very nice fashion, along with the new construction. As I said, you have ample acreage to expand, and because of that, being able to address a lot of the site issues that you have from parking, deficiency of parking, to drop-off zones for the kids when parents are dropping off their kids, and all the safety issues that are concerned with that, that are associated with that, all of that can be resolved, and there's an opportunity to take care of that in this particular facility. So, how could that possibly all shake out? You've seen this drawing before. So, if it's a dashed line and it's kind of looked at in red or colored in red, that's new construction. The salmon color, the orange color is really renovated space, and then all the spaces that are in white would receive a light finish of upgrades just so the building has some kind of continuity between space and throughout the entire facility. If you remember last time, however, there was a little bit of difference. We had a couple, we had a couple extra classrooms over there, and just kind of going through the conversation, listening to what you're talking about, and sharpening our pencil just a little bit more, thinking about balanced enrollment, we were able to extract a couple classrooms, still maintain that balanced enrollment idea, achieve the equity between facilities that was one of your guiding principles, and then, but keeping in mind of all some of the main characteristics and opportunities that I had mentioned before. Three-dimensionally, it could look something like that, that's just to give you an idea of, you know, how it could kind of mass out. Keeping it one story is going to be critical and essential, especially in the fact that it's a neighborhood school, and we don't want to overwhelm the neighbors. So, that's Edison from a comprehensive standpoint. There's a couple other schools that we want to address, and that's There's a couple of other schools that we want to address and that's Field and Lincoln and really your two oldest, two of the three oldest schools that you have in the district right now. It was a great timeline that your kids, you can't help but notice that, right? So we have our own timeline here. Thought it was pretty, pretty revealing, I guess if you will. You take a look at Lincoln and where Lincoln and Field fall in the 1900 to 2000 range from the left to right. With Hawthorne right in between the two already taken care of, it's time for Lincoln and Field to be thought about a little differently, I think. Especially when you start talking about all the other, all the buckets that we're trying to address, the programs that you're offering to your kids, there are some, I do want to say some major deficiencies at each one of those facilities that place them, when we start looking at trying to address those issues, place them in this more comprehensive, more comprehensive category. So starting off with Field, what are the challenges? And you know, it starts with a building that is approaching 100 years old, not quite there yet, but right around the corner, folks. And the idea of kind of honoring its vintage character. It is on the positive side, a little bit more blessed than Lincoln is in terms of the organization of spaces. Some of the challenges though, that we, students and staff have to deal with, visitors have to deal with right now is the fact that accessibility throughout the school is kind of compromised. There are raised levels and certainly when you go into the building at the front, you get buzzed in, you have to go upstairs then to get to the main office. And so anything could happen between the point that someone buzzed in and walking to the main entrance, people have to actually come down from the main office to greet people. It's just a very difficult, awkward and not ideal situation as far as a security standpoint goes. Limited adaptability and flexibility goes to the age of the building. It is very much a building of its time, so you know, reconfiguring walls on the inside, addressing these level changes and so forth are very difficult because of the kind of construction, how it was built and so forth. There are things that can be done, we've done them before, we know how to address them, but it's not easy. Adaptability is not one of the strengths of buildings of this age and vintage. The basement level, talked about flooding issues over at Jackson, Jefferson. You have it over here at Field as well. It just happens to be where your dining is and your library. And some other spaces actually I think art and there might be a first grade classroom down in the lower level. How do we address that? We need to, we need to look at that and think about that very carefully. Getting as many programs out of the basement level is something that we're thinking about with some of the diagrams that we've, we've been kind of wrestling with. And then the idea that there is minimal students resource or support space, certainly in this facility, to get it up to par with the programs that you have elsewhere in the district is something that we really need to give due diligence to in whatever improvements that we contemplate over here at Field. So looking at, looking at that very quickly, the same kind of designations that we have before, moving the library out of the basement, moving it towards the North Avenue end, expanding outward towards Emroy with four kindergarten classrooms and then relocating the main office from that upper sort of the half level to some new construction, which is right off the parking lot and a secured entry vestibule is what we're looking at in this area right over here with some student support spaces. Just going very quickly, that's how it looks three dimensionally on the second floor, just a series of renovations, small renovations, conference room, access to the library on the second floor for all kids and an ability to put an elevator over there to help the transition between each one of the levels is something that'd be part of the construction. And then going back down to the lower level, really starting to think about maybe some district professional development space and maybe, well, that's what we're looking at right over there. So really getting as many of the kids out of that space as possible and capitalizing on that for maybe some much-needed professional development space for people on the north end of town over here. An overall massing diagram and again, this is simply just a massing diagram, there's no architecture, architectural thought or embellishments put into it, but again, to give you an idea how volumetrically it kind of fits in with the, with the existing structure. The other building is Lincoln and we want to spend a little bit, maybe talk about some of the same challenges, but from, with a unique twist and then some other implementation or strategies that we can, that we can at least start thinking about and maybe addressing for this particular building. Again, vintage construction, it is over 100 years old and I'll tell you what, it reflects every bit of it, from the moment you walk in, when there's really no kind of lobby, it's not a very welcoming, I hate to be so negative, but it's not a very welcoming school to walk into. And all the different levels that go along with it, it's just one compromised level after another. Trying to navigate between the multiple additions that you have over there is a trick and I guess from a, from a PE standpoint, that really helps with the cardiovascular system, but I got to tell you, after a while, that probably grows a little bit old for everyone. Less than ideal security entrance, I talked a little bit about as you walk into that lobby. And right now in need of a pretty comprehensive overhaul of all of its infrastructure components. I'm talking mechanicals, the electrical and the plumbing systems. The first thing that happened when we did do our educational alignment study, we heard from several teachers walking through the building, this space is too hot, this space is too cold, we can't control this, we can't do this, you know, we can't get from this end of the building to that end of the building without having to go through this stairs and then it gets, it's kind of skinny over here and then we're in the multipurpose room, we can't get up to the, to the outside with great ease. I mean, the list goes on and on and on and it was reflected in the scores that we ultimately put together. Certainly Lincoln scoring probably the lowest, if I remember, in several categories for the elements and that we looked at and analyzed your buildings for. It is a chaotic organization just because of all the additions that have been added on over the course of years and you know, I think it also contributes to the fact, all these additions contribute to the fact that everything's on a different level. On the outside, restricted space, the building is right in the center of the site and so on one side you have your hard surface playing, you have your playground equipment. When we went out to take a look and talk at some teachers, they immediately grabbed me and said, well, you know, this is all fine, it's kind of tight over on this side, but we can't have our kids go onto the other side because of the building where there's greenfield space because there's no supervision, we don't have enough people to supervise the kids out there. And so we have to keep everybody in one spot on the left side of the school or the north side of the school or the south side of the school. Ideally, the building would be pushed to one side or the other to maximize supervision of the kids and really the amount of acreage and square footage that you have for ballfields, playground space and hard surface area for the kids. So, but there's, there's hope. Yeah, there's hope. If we start taking a look at the site, this is a new view that we haven't seen before, right? So this is, this really starts illustrating some of the challenges that the staff has with the kids, right? You got your playground, your hard surface over here, kind of wrapping around the building and I believe there's a fence right here right now, kids are restricted from going over here. So trying to navigate between the two sides is less, less than ideal as far as that goes. If we now start going sort of at a bird's eye view and start looking at things a little bit more three dimensionally, kind of wrapping around the site over here, here's your main entrance, this is the footprint of the building, here's where your parking is, along with all the parking that happens all around the site on the streets and I know that some of the neighbors are not particularly happy about that. But looking at sort of two approaches is what we want to think about right now. And they're the same approaches that we talked about and we illustrated when we did the workshop, but I just want to quickly illustrate them one more time to show opportunities and sort of get the, get your thoughts going. And the first one is this phased approach. And what happens here is that means all the kids stay on the site when construction is happening. But because of the fact that the building is in the middle of the site, kind of bisecting the site, that means there's a couple of areas, the gym and the music area that are kind of infringing on the square footage footprint that we would put on this north side. So as we do that, you can start taking a look at, this is where really the area of new construction would happen. The blue line reflects setbacks that the city would require us to maintain as part of the construction area and so then we have a lot of free area then going back over here, but the building is in the way, right? So if we look at maybe a two-story addition, we wrestled with a couple of different options, right? We looked at three-story options here, but given the size of the building, the fact that it's a neighborhood school, you're very close to a lot of the houses. I think there was consensus amongst the core team that we should stick with a two-story option. And in doing so, there's a little bit of infringement that would happen in your existing building over here when we keep kids on-site and we do a phased approach to construction. So here's a potential idea of how that might look. This would be the first floor, your main entrance with a drop-off, drive-off of hillside and then your library, some student resources in the center, flanked by classrooms and then a wing for your, your assembly spaces, your gym, your multipurpose room with a stage in between. All with access to hard surface playground, all kind of located together with parking in the far end of the site. So visitors, staff then would walk along this path to get to the main entrance or back along the street over here to get into multiple entrances at the beginning and the end of the day. Does that make sense? Yeah. This is just a, a quick look at the existing building footprint and so you could see the main entrance over here, the gym over here, how they overlap a little bit, right? So there's some, some tricks to construction that need to, to need some gymnastics with the construction that need to happen to make this, make this a workable plan. That's why we have our friends at ICI here. If you have specific questions, certainly Terry could address those. The budget numbers that you're going to see in just a moment are reflective of some of that, some of that complexity and construction that's going to happen to make this work. We have thought through this and we know it can be done, it's just not pleasant, it's not easy. And when it's not easy and pleasant, that translates into additional dollars. So that as a group, that made us think a little differently. Is there another way of looking at this? Okay, so here's the schedule I think that Terry talked a little bit about before. Some of the things that we want to highlight as far as that goes with Lincoln School, we would commence design, and this is the hypothetical, commence design in January 2019, start construction June 2020, which means there's about a year of design and documentation that needs to happen, talking to the staff, coming, reaching out to the public, coming back to you to get your thoughts and ideas. All those things happen in that year, lots of activity, a lot of milestone dates that happen along the way that we keep you informed on and certainly meeting regularly with Dr. Moyer, his trusted advisors to guide us as we go through the design process with the folks over at Lincoln. Partial occupancy would happen at the new school in August 2021, right? So that means as all the kids move into new construction, right? Then we start abandoning the existing building. When we start abandoning an existing building, full demolition of the building itself starts in September, actually, I'm going to check myself on that, it really should start in the summer of 2022, right? You don't want to be demolishing any building when the kids are on-site, so in the summer when the kids are gone, we start demolishing the building, we start looking at doing some site work, finishing things up for the project completion in July or August of 2022. That's when things would finally be complete. Does that make sense? Okay. There's a second approach and that second approach is what happens if we get the kids off the site? We find someplace to put them, we'll talk about that in just a moment. That opens up a whole lot of different opportunities for us from a design standpoint and then from a construction standpoint. It's a whole heck of a lot easier. And when we say easier, then that translates to dollars, it translates to time and all those things that I think people are going to be very curious about, certainly when, you know, there's a big difference between having to live through design and construction for four years as a, or three to four years as opposed to one to two years, right? And I think you could hear, Terry could verify the fact that when you do that, you know, after about year three or four, after about year two or three, people start getting a little, little antsy, a little bit more uncomfortable, right? They've lived through it all, it's time to get it done. And this is the plan that kind of addresses the fact that we could do things in a much more condensed, consolidated timeframe with a better budget number if we can get the kids off the site.
So Craig, can I, I just would like to say something real quick. When he talks about the inconvenience, I don't want people just to think it's like the inconvenience for the people that are doing the work. You've got teachers and students that are inconvenienced for a much longer period of time, so the disruption to that is significant, but also the other factor is you've got, you've got dust, you've got, you know, construction vehicles, so you're disrupting the neighborhood, you've got people parking cars all over the neighborhood, you, all that kind of stuff. So, so the inconvenience isn't just because it's harder for them to design and build, it's a shared inconvenience, I guess, I just thought would be important to point out.
Thanks for that clarification. And so just very quickly, it offers up a lot of different opportunities to think about the design in a myriad of different ways, not only just where we position the building, but the space organization within. This is just an initial attempt at trying to, to kind of honor the program elements that you have at the other schools. It doesn't mean it's exhaustive or complete by any stretch of the imagination, but it gets us pointed in the right direction as far as this clean slate approach goes. Again, like the previous one, it's a two-story option with all the same site amenities, playgrounds, hard surface, sort of a parking lot that is moved to the side away from the kids and addresses, I think, quite nicely the, sort of this neighborhood school concept. Two stories, maybe some later date, we can go through some of the elements that are in there, but from a scheduling standpoint, now it's really kind of dependent on a lot of other things happening in the district, right? And so from a scheduling standpoint, we start taking a look at commencing design, perhaps January 2019, it could even be delayed for another six months if we really wanted to do that. Start of, but because of the fact that we're moving kids off the site, that means we have to do some improvements to some of the other schools. Those other schools potentially are Brian, Edison, as well as maybe even Hawthorne. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean new construction at Hawthorne, there's some space that we can claim, reclaim and stick a grade level over there, we'll talk about that in just a moment. But new construction then would be complete over at Brian and Edison in this particular scenario, August of 2020 and because of the amount of new construction contemplated to make this happen over at Edison, we're looking at June of 2021 to get, to be finished with that construction. Then start of construction happens in, at Lincoln, June 2021, right when we're finishing up over at Edison and Brian with a completion date of 2022 for Lincoln, new construction over at Lincoln. And you could see the timeframe over here from the start of construction to the end is not, not in the three-year category because of all the gymnastics that you have to do to work around the kids and the staff, but it really happens very efficiently and effectively within 12 months, 12 to 13 months. Anything to add, Terry? So this is just some early thinking. If you remember, we had this diagram that shows potential scenarios where for the approach number two, that we could, we could start moving the kids. In this particular instance, we're looking at Lincoln, Hawthorne, Edison and then Brian right over here. If we look at moving the fifth grade over to Hawthorne, we know that there's four classrooms that we could easily fit one grade level into that school without much, without much issue. And then looking at moving the fourth graders over to Edison into two mobiles, right? So we can get the entire class into two mobile units over there with, with the remaining grade levels, K, one, two and three into the new construction if that is actually taken care of first before we do any work over at Lincoln. That's kind of a dual purpose, right? So when we look at Edison, we think about balancing enrollment, taking care of all-day kindergarten, but the side benefit of doing that construction ahead of time is that it could also house on a temporary basis, the kids from Lincoln as you contemplate and you implement this clean slate approach, approach number two. A second option as far as approach number two goes is relocating the fifth grade class over to Brian. If you remember when we were looking at the different, different options and the buckets for all the different schools, I had mentioned we were with relocating the main office and the security entry vestibule into some new construction at the front of the building. It opened up space for two additional renovated classrooms on the inside and adding two classrooms to the last wing on the, I think it's on the west, the west side, allows us four additional classrooms where we can move the fifth grade over from Lincoln to Brian on a temporary basis. Moving fourth grade over to Hawthorne in those four classrooms that are vacant right now and then K, one, two and three grades over to the new construction over at Edison. now, and then K1, 2, and 3 grades over to the new construction over at Edison allows us to take care of all of the kids, at least on a temporary basis, as construction is happening over at the Lincoln site. For some of the considerations and the pros and cons of each one of those approaches, we reviewed these last time, but I think they're worth looking at one more time. Pros for approach number one, which is keeping the kids on site, there's really no temporary student location and some of the inconveniences that go along with that. There is minimal to no impact on any of the other facilities in the district by having to house these kids and the staff. And construction starts sooner over at Lincoln. You get a jumpstart on that, right? We can get going on the design, they can start bidding out the drawings and getting contractors working on site earlier. And that's simply because we don't have to do the work at Bryan, Edison, or even start looking at what improvements need to be made at Hawthorne to take care of the kids there. Some of the cons, as I had mentioned before, very complicated as far as staging and construction. Number-one job is keeping kids safe and secure, not just from, you know, visitors and people, but also from construction activity. ICI has a great track record of doing that, we've done it before, we know how to do it. But it is complicated, and it requires additional resources to make it happen. That translates to higher construction costs, longer duration of construction, and all the uncomfortable unease that goes along with it, not just for your kids, but for the people in the surrounding area. There is a greater impact on educational activities, and then there are stormwater zoning issues, complications that we're going to have to, we're going to have to address. But it's really not just with approach one, but approach two as well. I mean, that's just going to be part of the project. There's going to be some disruption, right? There's going to be a time when your gymnasium is going to be offline, when you're not going to have access to your music room because of the transfer that needs to happen with students and the construction activity that kind of overlaps. There are utility complications, building on the north side over there that we're going to have to navigate around. That's our problem, that's not your problem, but it figures into the budget that we recommend. And then parking is always, it's an issue right now, right? And now you're going to be taking up large parts of your site for construction, it's just going to get worse. It's just going to get worse. If we look at, so the pros and cons almost kind of reverse between approach number one and two. By getting the kids off the site, really unencumbered access to the site by the contractors. Parking doesn't become as big an issue for them, certainly, because we have room on site to make that happen. Shorter construction and less cost. It provides better opportunity or greater opportunity to achieve some of the ideal design solutions that we could come up and contemplate and partner with you on. Minimal impact to the neighbors. The transitions for the kids becomes a lot easier, right? They make one move, they stay there for a year, and then they come back, and there's not a lot of jockeying around between new construction, old construction, not having the gym, not having the music area and so forth, so all of that becomes a little easier. And there's a long-term middle school solution that also is included with this. Some of the more undesirable aspects, it's a one-year location, kids are off-site, and so, you know, whether it's busing or parents driving kids to these remote locations, that's an issue. It impacts other facilities, and there is a delayed start of construction that goes along with this, right? Because we've got to take care of things at other facilities before we actually get into doing the construction activity over here at Lincoln. So, there's the dollar figures associated with the phased approach. You see just slightly higher than it was with the clean slate, about a $3 million difference or delta between the two. And it came up as part of the conversation that we heard you say, "Well, you know, what happens? What's the price of doing nothing?" I think is the quote. That may have been you, Karen, I'm not sure. But there is this other approach, and maybe there's more than just one. So what we did is we started taking a look at what happens if you don't build new at all. What kind of investment are you, and what kind of resources are you going to have to allocate to Lincoln to make this school operational, to achieve the idea of equity, to get the building on par with the rest of the facilities in the district? And here's the investment that you would have to be making. We looked at it from the maintenance standpoint, and just to kind of keep the building functional, about $4.2 million. You start taking a look at, trying to take care of, and actually it's about renovating all your other spaces, making accessibility throughout the school, the organization of the spaces, and the relationship of them to each other and to the outside on par with what's going on throughout the district. A really big number, $18.1 million you would expend on that particular building. If you wanted to take a leap into the future ready category and get the library or the media center out of the basement, get it some natural light and access by all students along with the multipurpose room, which is kind of in a compromised location, you're looking at about a $4.2 million investment. But here's what the outcomes are. You're still left with a 100-plus-year-old building. It's not going to be ideal. Substantial investment will still need to be made on a regular basis, not only immediately for the building, but on a reoccurring basis, because the building is now getting older and older every year. So the upkeep with it is going to increase as well. And then, of course, I talked about just a small addition over here, and the renovation, you know, that's a temporary thing, it would last over the course of three summers, kind of thinking and contemplating on that. You know, it could only happen in the summer because the kids have nowhere else to go, we're not going to be moving them around. So the summer's our time to get this work done. So it's going to be hot and heavy, and it's going to be busy, but that would happen over the course of three years. Make sense? Does that address the question that you had for what happens if we don't do anything? And this is just a quick summary, I guess, if you will. Sorry, it looks like we're missing Edison over here. Got some weird stuff going on with this slide. For the comprehensive improvements, that puts you in the category of $71.5 million, assuming the lesser of the two approaches, for a new Lincoln building, which would be $32.5 million. And that brings us to a bigger budget discussion. And at this point, Mark is going to take the mic back, and I'm going to go get a drink of water.
Okay, so, excuse me, real, I'll go through these quickly. So let's just look at all the buckets added together, right? So if we decided to do all the maintenance work, all the building-specific work, all the future-ready work, and all the comprehensive improvements, we're looking at a scenario number one of about $158 million that would take care of all the projects in your district in all 14 of your buildings. So, that's one scenario. So, we could look at just peeling away these paint cans and deciding, let's just do scenario two, which is future-ready, building-specific, and maintenance, at $144 million. Or scenario three would be just the building-specific and maintenance projects at $98, $97, $98 million. And then the last scenario is if you were just to do the maintenance work for the next 10 years to keep your buildings up and running, you're about $26 million. So, these scenarios are not, it's just one approach that we looked at, and there's a lot of different scenarios that we, as a design and construction team and you as a district, could look at. So I don't want you to be focused so much on these, but we wanted to look at big picture and how that played out, so. So with that, I'll give it to Brad, and we'll wrap this up.
Do you want to do the financial thing now, or have we finished that?
Well, I think, well, originally, we were going to put that in there, and then, did the thinking change? I don't, it doesn't make a difference to me either way. You want to just go ahead and finish up, and then Elizabeth's here? That's fine.
Four more slides, kind of talking about the next steps. So where you are in the process is this is an entire life cycle of a project, from very early conception through the point where all the work is done. So, right now, we've been through about three years of community engagement, doing the facility assessments, developing a draft master facility plan, kind of at that point right now where you're ready to take the next step, depending on further discussion of the board and what additional questions you might need. That next step would include additional community engagement, which we'll talk about in a moment, the ability to understand priorities and get more community feedback on what those priorities should be, and align some of the funding scenarios, finalize a draft facility master plan, and then enable the board to be in a position with all that feedback to decide what you want to do with it. If a ballot question's in the future, if it's not, what are the other options? At that point, the funding would be in place if you chose to go that route and the community agreed with you, and then you start the entire process of design and construction of the whole project. So, you're kind of like right there, right now. So, long road to get there, but a long road ahead as well. So, community engagement, what would be that next step? And that's really, this is where Marcia Sutter would give the presentation, but I'm going to do this for her since she's out of town. But that community engagement step's really all about enabling the district to share some of this information, the findings, the research, the numbers, share some of that information out, and have the stakeholders provide input on the different options that can be then formalized and presented to the board in the future. It really is an opportunity to have two-way dialogue and time to incorporate those findings back into what will eventually become a final master facility plan. And then also included in this would be the formation, I believe, of a community advisory team, which is something that the district would look into. How is all that information going to be shared? A variety of different venues, much like it has been already, in terms of public meetings, specific focus groups, probably specifically related to those projects at Lincoln, Edison, Field, et cetera, possibly another thought exchange and online survey that could gather more input and feedback specific to this. Maybe there's a phone poll as well. These are all the ideas that have been vetted and kind of mapped out as the next step in getting feedback from your community on this process. So, just kind of in closing there, the action steps going forward would be to develop all these materials, organize and meet with the community advisory team, talk with the staff about how we're going to facilitate and design that process over the next couple of months, engage in the community engagement process of mailings and all the different meetings and survey tools that we talked about, and have that team come back and report back to the Board of Education later in the summer, hopefully before the end of the, the start of the next school year, and then maybe support some of that towards early or late summer, early August in terms of the response to the community, in terms of a phone poll. So, a very detailed next step of community engagement, feedback, organization, a lot of reaching out to people, sharing information, getting information back to you to provide more data points for you to contemplate what you want to do with the next step. So, was that like an hour? A little over an hour. It's a short version. Elizabeth, you want to talk about the?
Well, I guess we should take, do you want to take a quick, I don't know if you want to take a quick break or ask questions right now before we move to Elizabeth's presentation? Are there any questions? What? Okay, so just hear everything, okay. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. I know you've done a lot of listening, so I will be brief. These are bond options simply for discussion. Just want to set the table briefly. The district's statutory debt limit is $324 million, and it has approximately $95 million of bonds outstanding. So your net debt limit is $229 million. The outstanding bonds were approved by referendum in 2000 and 2006, and they mature and levy year 2024. So, few more years till the prior referendum bonds are repaid. When you look at any new bond referendum, you can extend the payments at the same level for 20 years from the time of issuance. So, if you approve a ballot question, you have actually five years to issue all the bonds, because clearly if you're talking about anything in the scope that's been discussed, it's not all going to get done in three years. So you have that option to issue pieces of bonds, but five years after the approval of the ballot question. The other thing I wanted to kind of put in perspective is the district's tax rate. So, the district's current total tax rate that's being paid on here in 2017 is $4.77. Of that, debt is $0.52, or 11% of the D-205 rate. If you think about the debt portion of the rate in terms of your total tax rate, the total taxes that a resident pays to all the various taxing bodies is about $7.77. So the debt part is really 7.8% of the total tax rate. I just kind of wanted to put that in perspective, because when we look at bonds, we're talking about just that part of the tax levy that goes for debt. Okay. If we look at the outstanding bonds, the average tax rate for the next seven years is $0.54 for the bonds that were previously approved. So, we've got four scenarios. Again, these are just for discussion purposes, they were not meant to go with any of the various options that Brad and the group just put forth. But we're starting out with $100 million, all issued in January of 2019, paid off over 20 years, with no restructuring or refunding of outstanding bonds. Then, option two is that same option, but looks at restructuring of the bonds. And I'll get into graphically in a minute why you might want to consider that. Option three is $142 million issued in pieces, $25 million in January of 2019, $50 million in April of 2021, and $67.4 million in 2023. Because these bonds would be issued in different pieces, and each one can go out 20 years, the total payback for this scenario is 25 years. Same thing in option four, where we're looking at $157.9 million, $50 million in January of 19, $50 million in 2021, and $57.9 million in 2023. Again, 25-year payback. So, just one mention, all these scenarios assume that you'll continue to levy those non-referendum bonds that you've issued in the past for life, safety, and maintenance, and those kind of things. So here's where we are currently. So, you can see the bars are a little choppy, certainly in the last five years, the district's done a tremendous amount of refunding and shortening up the debt and saving the taxpayers, I believe the number was over $15 million in interest. But you can see in 2024, the drop-off. That's when those referendum bonds are repaid. Those small little bars that go out, those are not bonds issued now, but a presumption that you would issue some non-referendum bonds to continue to keep meeting your life safety requirements and maintenance. So that's, those are just blocked in there as an assumption. Okay, so here's $100 million issued in January of 2019, paid off over 20 years, no refunding. So, when we issue bonds, we have to pay interest on bonds. And so you see what happens is the interest payments go on top of the existing debt, and then the principal starts to get retired when the old debt's retired in 2024. So the new debt is amortized and levies year '25 through '36 in a level manner. So that's all great, and it kind of extends the debt where you've been, in fact, at a little lower level. The only problem is that you have about a $0.20 increase in those years where those outstanding bonds are still existing. So we have some spikes of about, brings the debt over $20 million in levy year '21 and '22. The other thing to note is we're using something called capitalized interest, and I'm not going to get too technical on this, but it's where you're using a portion of the bond proceeds above $100 million to pay interest in the first three years while you're doing your construction to avoid the spikes coming even. your construction to avoid the spikes coming even earlier. So that's the 100 million, no refunding, 20 years, January of 2019. If we go to the option two, this is just to illustrate, if you do some refunding in 2021, and this is a refunding that's not going to occur until 2021. Why? Because that's when some of those outstanding referendum bonds are callable that had been refunded again. And so, we have the opportunity on a tax exempt basis on a portion of it and taxable on a portion to restructure it. And that, what that does is it cuts off those spikes that were in the levy year 21 and 22, and makes your debt service a bit more level. Again, we're going 20 years, but if you just compare these two graphs, you can see the payments are now just under 15 million, whereas if we didn't do the refunding, they'd be a little under, closer to 14.5 million, as you see in option one. So, overall, it is a bit more expensive over time, but it avoids those spikes in the years 21 and 22 that you saw in option one. Option three, here's the 142 million with 25 million in January of 19, 50 million in January of 2021 with refunding, and 67.4 million in January of 2023. You know, depending on what plan, I mean, this is really just putting scenarios together for your review without looking specifically when money needs to be spent on the various construction options that you're looking at. So this goes all the way to 2041. And by issuing the bonds in pieces, we have more interest rate risk as time goes on. We've certainly seen interest rates already starting to come up. However, it does allow the debt to be extended to that 25 years instead of 20, which is the law. And it lowers the annual payments, but you're paying debt over a longer period of time. And if you recall the prior graph, I mean, we're issuing more bonds here, but the payments level out just over 15 million in this scenario. Option four is 157.9 million, and we've got 25 million, or sorry, 50 million in 2019, 50 million plus refunding in 2021, and 57.9 million in 2023. One thing I'll add is that we've put in a good amount of cushion in these options. In the 2019 issue, we have an additional 50 basis points. In the 2021, we have a full percent, and in 2023, we have 1.5%. So as these bonds come on, the ones issued in 2023 are much more expensive because we've put a cushion in there. Hard to know what's going to happen in the interest rate world. You know, we've certainly seen rates come up. We've, we may see higher rates, so we're trying to put a little cushion in it. So, that's the option four, 157.9 million, issued 50 million, 50 million, and then just under 60 million. So if we put a little summary page together, and I'm sorry the numbers are small for the audience, but I think it goes worth stating that if we do nothing, you certainly have repercussions on your facilities, but the taxpayers will feel a reduction as the bonds that were issued in 2000 and 2006 get paid off in 2024. So, these might look like an extension of your current debt, but it's worth mentioning that if we do nothing, the taxes are going to go down. So the referendum bonds retiring will result in just under a 50-cent tax rate deduction in 2025. And we've quantified that for you on a $350,000, $500,000, and $750,000 home. So you can see what kind of savings that would be without any referendum. Of course, you get no facility improvements either. So going through these four options, we've got option one and two, which have 100 million in 2019. We have the total principal and interest on the new bonds, and here you can see that the cost of option two, the restructuring is, is higher because we're restructuring bonds in 2021 and reissuing them, smoothing out the tax payments. Finally, our maturity is 2036, just 20 years, the all-in true interest cost with the various cushions on the interest rates we discussed. And what we looked at here to try to quantify the impact on the homeowner is looked at the average current tax rate for the existing bonds, which as you recall from the first page is 54 cents, versus what's the average rate for the 20-year bond? So, the average rate for option one is 56 cents. But that doesn't consider the fact that you've got those spikes, if you recall where it's going to go up and then come down. But on average, it's really only a 1.7 cent increase over the life of the bond. So that's why the impacts on the home are very reasonable at $19, 27, and $41 for the various value of homes. Option two, a little more expensive, going up to 57 cents because we're restructuring, we're flattening the payments a bit, and you can see the impacts there. The larger amounts in options three and four have a bit more impact. Two, for the option three, that's the 142.4 million altogether, that's a 2.9 cent increase on average over what they've been paying. Again, remember, this is just extending it a two and a half, or 2.9 cents higher than what they have, what taxpayers have been paying. So that is a bit more expensive, but not too bad. And then option four is where we've got 157.9 million, 50 million, 50 million, and 57.9 million, and that is a 6.8 cent increase. So, if you compare these average tax rates, in my humble opinion, the increases aren't horrible, but what cannot be overlooked is that you're extending debt for another 25 years, especially in option three and four. So if you were not to do this, taxpayers would obviously have some relief. So, with that, I will pause. I put in appendix charts on assumptions and more numbers that are small, too small to look at and add on the screen. But again, just a variety of options to give you a feel for what could be done based on where you are now and what you might do to extend debt.
Okay. I mean, there's so much information here. So, would you like to start with the first presentation? Would, Chris, go ahead.
Can I just ask a macro question, starting backwards? And where we're trying to get to before we get into the details as far as going forward? I mean, this is a process, like you said, that started years and years ago, where it started with what's the future of education going to look like at Elmhurst, which necessarily required a, a facility master plan. And so this is just another step in that process to get to a holistic plan, which, which then feeds into how do you execute it? And I guess my question is our role in this now, and what are we trying to get to? Because, and so many of the things that we do every day here, when we get together, we decide. And this is one where we don't decide. You know, I think our role is to identify and organize thoughts, to screen things like we're doing right now, and then to share them. Because ultimately, it's the community's direct vote that's going to approve this or not. And, and we're at this point in time right now where what we're trying to assemble isn't a referendum, but a facility master plan. And, and so I guess that's my question about our role is, you know, as we go through these, we need to vet them. But, in my mind, we're giving the community choices. There's several questions they have to answer. One is, you know, do you want to maintain, enhance, or transform the physical plant? You know, the second is, which options do you like? What, how, how do we implement them, and how much are you willing to spend? And then only then can you get to, I mean, do you want to phase this? Do you want to borrow the money now? Do you want to borrow the money later? But until we have the community, you know, this is an iterative process between the district, the consultants, and the community to get to, you know, a definitive, hey, this is what we want as a community. And so when I look at what you guys have presented, I think that, my question to us is, our challenge is to distill this into something that we can present to the community? Are there things we need to take off the table, add to the table? Because ultimately, I don't know whether, I mean, the community can come back to us and say, yes, love it, yes, like it, but I need these changes or no, start over. And frankly, until we have an hour of public comment screaming at us to do this, I'm not quite ready to vote to raise anybody's taxes. And so, just framing the conversation with this presentation is the question, is it good enough to take to the community to get their feedback on it? Or, I mean, what, what is the goal of the conversation?
Well, we, I agree with what you're saying, that the community decides, not us. But we need to feel comfortable with what we're showing the community. So my questions, my question for the board members are, are you comfortable with these concepts? Do you need them to be explained more? Because whatever goes to community, we need to be able to explain. So we need to be comfortable with what's presented to the community. And then, yes, they tell us what they're interested in. Karen?
So to that, the first thing that I thought of is, this is really just a culmination of the answer to the options, to the requests that we got from the community way back when, from the two perspectives that you mentioned, Chris, which is, we've got aging facilities, we had parents coming to us about Lincoln, community members, staff, saying, what are we going to do about our facilities that need to be maintained, need to be upgraded, causing problems for students, not ADA, compliant, et cetera? As well as, what are we doing to move our district forward? So those are the things that we were getting during the campaign, whatever, six, eight years ago, almost. Jim, you got, probably got it, you know, well before that. Kara, you've got it recently in, you know, new, new election. So really, what we were chartered to do, and this started back with Dave Purno, who initiated the focus group because of all these questions, and us saying, you know, we're not sure if we look out to the future, how we're going to be able to afford to maintain our buildings that are aging and all these other things that we want to accomplish on behalf of the community. Not just the maintenance to keep it status quo, but to continue to move education and our facilities, which is part of that, and an environment that is conducive to education and what this community is expecting from education. So that, to me, is still like the, the premier place of what, why we're here. Now, throughout that process, we've wanted to continue to have the community involved, as well as staff, as you even heard through the facility, the construction folks and the building folks. What we kept saying, and every time, even with Dave Purno, let alone the most recent Focus 205, is you keep asking me what I want, but there's no price tag. So this is good information to at least have thumbnail, you know, numbers and scenarios that, one, what I like is the comprehensive look at every single one of our buildings and what they need. So I really like the way that you laid it out of maintenance, you know, building specific, future-ready, and then what could we do for our, at least a few, at least Lincoln, anyway? But I really would like, I think I'm more comfortable now than I have any time before of at least sharing it with community members who are willing to work with us, to share it with, you know, more of the community, to see what does this, you know, Elmhurst, no, District 205, which extends beyond Elmhurst, community, what are they willing to support? What do they really want? So anyway, I just, to me, I was bigger picture, we're finally getting to something that the community can then now wrap their arms around and kind of start working with options. And what is, you know, how do we present to the community on behalf of our community and education about how we begin to work together as a cohesive team with all the parties involved, with some, some numbers and some comprehensive view?
So my challenge here, and maybe this, this, I think, is similar to what Chris was talking about. We've got a lot of information here, which is great, okay? So that's what we asked for. But I'm trying to go back to, if the next step is to take it to the community, what are we asking the community? Because right now, I don't know what we're asking the community. Because we're not asking the community at this point. I mean, I feel like we're asking the community seven different questions. I mean, the first question is, and maybe we've gotten the answer already, Chris said this, maintain, enhance, transform. Okay. First question. Then, based off what they said, then we say, okay, if we do this, this is what it looks like. If you do transform, you do something else. So I would like to have that, a really clear understanding of, when we give something to the community, exactly what are we asking for them? Because right now, it feels like it's like a, it's, it's way too open-ended. It's, it's not something that can be digested and have a reasonable response.
Continuing on Margaret's theme, I think we would benefit and the community would benefit from a good board discussion about exactly what the plan is. Because I think any questions we have, the community will have, and then probably have five more questions for everyone that we can think of. So I think it just helps everyone be prepared to bring this to the community, to fully understand what the ramifications of the plan are. You know, you're looking at, at adding, you know, roughly 225 student capacity to a school that I already, that I understand already has excess capacity of 70 to 100 students. So, you know, how big are you going to build, if you're talking about renovating or building new schools, how big are you going to build those? Are you going to move boundary lines? All sorts of things like that, that we need to figure out so that, as Margaret and Karen says, that we can bring, that we know what we're bringing to the community. So I encourage a discussion some other time than 10 o'clock at night, that we can ask those questions, vet this all out. And also, Elizabeth, can I get a copy of your presentation? Thank you. Thank you.
And when we have February, we have February 24th, set aside, at 11:15 in the morning.
Okay. Now, to go back on to, we've got to ask some questions, and then are we going to have the opportunity to talk to that consultant who is going to help this whole community engagement, help formalize that? Because I think that's an important piece to understand what her, her vision is of how this, this will work out.
Margaret, you may not have, have seen it yet, but this afternoon I did send something out with some dates that she's available.
What you're saying on the 24th? Well, I, I was saying on the 24th, and because it would be nice, I assume she's seen all this information, but for her to be able to articulate how this community engagement plan might look. What's, what's, when we go to the, when we go to the community the first time, what are we saying? Then we get the information back, and then, you know, and then what? And then the second time we go, what might it look like?
Well, yeah, I don't think she's available on the 24th. She certainly is willing to explain that to everybody and to people individually who have questions, but I don't think she's available on the 24th. The way she explains it is, you know, the idea of a two-way
available on the 24th. The way she explains it is, you know, the idea of a two-way dialogue. We share information, we get information back, and then we have the opportunity to act based on the feedback that we get. The first step would be to start kind of a core group, similar to the Focus 205 core group, that we could begin to explain where we're at in the process, and then they could give us feedback on various different things with the messaging, with the different things we should consider, our different points of view as we begin to get further into the process. So, you know, the first step is to convene that group. And, but all of those other steps that you saw in the presentation as far as, there are formalized systems and things that would occur over a period of time to engage the entire community as a whole. So she can, I can try to find a way to get her to explain that to the board in greater detail, but I just, I just know that she, I believe she's not available on the 24th, correct?
Right. And so maybe, and I can appreciate that, that she's not available, but maybe, I guess what I'm trying to envision is just like, just like White and Elizabeth put together this draft, this plan on what it might look like, can she put together a plan of what this community engagement might look like? That's the part, I understand all these different pieces, but I don't understand what we're going to the community with, and what questions we're asking, and how we're going to get the information back. Those are the pieces that I am not clear on right now.
So yes, I'm sure she can provide that to you. This was more of a higher-level outline, so the specifics, the level of specificity that you're asking for, we can get that. That should be relatively easy to do.
So just to Margaret's point, I think it's, I mean, I appreciate the offer of the one-on-ones. I don't think those work for something like this. I want to hear what my colleagues had to say with the expert in front of us. And I also think this is going to need to get chunked into smaller pieces. And I'll be honest with you, Dave, I'm not, I'm going to take November off the table. All right? It may go back on the table someday, but right now, that's the least of our problems. Right now is getting a well-vetted, community-supported, long-term facilities plan in place that the whole community is excited and dying to have. And they will drive that date. So I don't want to solve for November. I want to solve for, we should have a date when we want to have this facilities plan wrapped up, because we don't want to go forever. But until we get closer to that point in time, any talk of November, I think, is foolish. I mean, I think you've seen our community, we are very active and want to be involved with it. And we welcome that. I mean, it is what it is. It's just how we're going to make good decisions. And so I think this needs to get chunked up into pieces. There's going to be several iterations through that community grinder, I think, with it. I understand, one of my questions for the consultant is just like, okay, you've seen this presentation, there's a lot of great stuff. What does it look like if you were to take that to the community? What details are missing? What do we scale back? And that's a meeting by itself, in addition to then, you know, a meeting where we have questions for these guys. So it'll move along. But I'm just saying, what we're solving for is a target date for having a master's facilities plan. The rest of it we'll figure out.
Yes, I agree with you, and I understand that. In fact, I think that, you know, we've charted out various different things because they're information points that we need to know, what our options are, and when those different things could be possible. But our goal the entire time was to complete a master facilities plan and get the second round of community involvement going. So I don't think that we're a part on that. I do think, and our consultants would say, that regardless of the date, the importance of getting that second round going sooner rather than later is there.
Yeah, because I want to, us to pay attention to the timing based on what contracts we have employed and approved of with all of these consultants. That's a key piece. Not to say we'll rush anything in order to, you know, meet those dates or consider them, but I think we have to think about it all. That's all I'm saying. Because that is making the best utilization of the taxpayers' money that we've approved so far with the facility, with all of the consultants that we've hired and approved of so far.
... money. So board members need to feel comfortable with what we're bringing to the community, and we're not there yet. Because this is, I mean, we had a lot presented to us today. So I guess we, do you want to adjourn for tonight and start up again on the 24th? Okay. John?
Can we just ask the community, get a head start on this? Look at the PowerPoints that's here. Look at the bond options. Just get into this. We want to know what you feel, and we want to get it as early as possible. So I just ask the community to please take a look at these things. Look at these things that are in for each of the school buildings. There's definitional issues. There's a lot of acronyms and things in here that don't are, so somehow we're going to have to supplement with a glossary of some kind so they could know what a, oh, what are some of these names that are in here? There's a...
You can get it.
Yeah, MEP upgrades, and MPRs, and site redevelopment. So, but I hope we can get the public involved quickly.
I was just going to say, I think it's good if we keep the conversation going so we don't have a conversation and then kind of forget and have to backtrack, you know, because it's so much, you know, even just from, I don't know, when was our last meeting? The 27th? You know, even some of that, it's hard to remember what we talked about. So I think it's good if we can keep moving forward just with the conversation so that all the questions and things that we're thinking are right here and we're not covering, you know, backtracking all the time.
So it looks like two things. One is, once again, just like every time we go through something, new information, and then we have a lot of questions that we want to discuss. So that's the first thing. The second is clearly having, and Malia, you're shaking your head, that Marcia can, and she knows this stuff, but kind of put it in a way that we get a better idea of how then we bring it to the community, what we bring to the community, what we're asking for them, being clear, so that it's clear to them, and so that we can get some clear feedback. And then what's the next step, and how do we do that? So those are the two key pieces in my mind that are, that happen in parallel next. And keep it moving, like Kara said.
One more agenda item. It's superintendent's consent agenda. There's one item, personnel report. I need a motion.
I move that we approve the, that the board approve the superintendent's consent agenda, the personnel report.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Karen, sent by Chris. Is it a voice?
It's a voice, yeah, because we're hiring somebody.
Okay.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Goforio?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough? Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Eppner?
Yes, that's seven ayes, no nays, that motion passes. Superintendent's communication or board communications? Is there anything? Okay, upcoming meetings, we talked about February 24th, 11:15, that's not on this agenda. February 27th, Board of Education meeting, and March 20th, Board of Education meeting. We've reached the end of the agenda. I'll declare the meeting adjourned.